All right, county council regular meeting to order here on Monday, November 25th at 7:00 PM. Roll call, looks like we're missing Councilmember Hallstrom this evening. We sure of speedy recovery. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution, and to the Constitution of the United States.
Look for motion to approve tonight's agenda. All right, got a motion by Councilmember Schultz, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, number five, consent agenda, any questions on that? If not, we look for motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
I got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve tonight's consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
By Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, next, matters on the floor, any wishing to speak, please step forward, state your name and address, and address the council in any manner you wish. General, I'll attempt to answer your questions, or we'll consider those for future meetings. Is there any matters on the floor? If you have matters on the floor, please step up.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name's Martin Duffy, 337 Central Avenue, Duffy's Bar and Grill. Last time I was here, I spoke about the birthday party over at Sykes Park going on two years ago, year and a half ago. And after that situation, I decided maybe it was time to show some support to our police department and fire department and folks in uniform. So I went over to two Kenco signs, and I had some signs made up. We've got a big copy in front and back of our business. But I've got these, and these are, if you go up and down Main Street, Central Avenue, you'll see a half dozen of these on storefronts. I've only got a half dozen, I haven't done a very good job of getting them out. But I just want everybody to see this, if there's anybody that would like to put one of these on their storefront to show support for the police department, fire department, EMTs, military, whatever, you can get one of these at Duffy's Bar and Grill. I think it's a good thing. Oh, before I go any further, I want to mention a new barber shop down on 81, Raj &amp; Emmanuel. Good place. I don't have much to work with, but they did a fine job. And it's a new business, they sell clothing, shoes, and they do a fine job. So if you need a haircut, stop in and say hi, they're good people.
Excuse me, Martin, what's the address? Do you know how far down?
It's right next to A to Z Construction, that little building, that tiny building down there.
Okay, just so everyone at home knows.
81 and 1st. Was that, yeah, that'd be...
Second.
Right across the street from Napa.
Yep.
Right.
Yeah, and very comfortable, nice little shop, did a good job. And there are a couple youngsters that got a battle ahead of them, so if you can, give them a little help. Got a letter the other day, my son told me about it, about the alley easement. And so I'm trying to find out what's going on, what the situation is, what it's going to cost me, and to the best of my knowledge, it's going to cost a good amount, it sounds like. And I guess, I don't think I've finished paying for the Central Avenue debacle. So I ask, wait until I get that done, wait until I get done paying for the Central Avenue thing before you come after me for some more, that would be appreciated greatly. I've been here 35 years at Duffy's Bar and Grill, I love this town. And for the last 30 years, I've stood before the city council and said, you know what we need in this town? We need parking. We need parking. And what do I hear? For 30 years, I've heard, no, no, we don't need parking, we have all the parking we need. Well, that's not, that's not true. You go out there today, go up there right now, and walk four blocks to go down to a store, walk from here to Dick's, and that's a little bit of a haul. And to be effective, a parking area has to be within two to three blocks, three blocks maximum. This is just my opinion, but I think it's pretty close. So please, I'm begging you, you want businesses to come into this town, you want to keep businesses in this town, they need parking. And please, before you make my alleyway really pretty, think seriously about getting some parking in this town. And again, anybody, show some support for guys and gals in uniform, it'd be great, go a long way. Thank you very much.
Okay. Last meeting, I forgot to mention something. So last meeting, 10D, the approved counts payable, I think it was page 66 in the packet for last meeting. Looked like there was three charges that were exactly the same for the MPCA, to the penny. And nobody asked about it. And I know when you were approving everything, I said something, and I didn't mean to interrupt. But I just want to make sure that you guys take a look and make sure it's not an error. I think it was, I can't remember them all. I overheard side talk about the cannabis, where it might be pushed out till 2026. I know you guys are doing a resolution on that. All I ask is, you make sure it's complete, and there's no interpretation for the police to look at it a different way than the public. Because I think that's very key, setting up for failure. I know during the work session, you were discussing review process with Shane. I think you should do it more often, especially when he's under internal investigation. I know Friday night, there was an issue with an officer blocking a road, doing a parking offense on a private property, and no emergency lights are around. That officer saw me, waved, it is what it is. Last night, 11:24, marked unit, decide to park on 81 in the turn lane in front of the OCEOPD, not the OCEOPD, OCEO post office. Turn all of its lights off. Public safety? Is that how you teach your officers? Other than that, I think I'll wait until public hearings. Oh, actually, this is from Brooklyn Park. They do, in September, they do a week for restaurants. We gotta remember, 150th is not one weekend, it's a whole entire year. So I think we should do something with all the businesses, monthly drawings or something like that, creates revenue, and then end of the year, mini dazzle, do a big drawing for everybody that hands in, I call it bingo card or something like that. I will hand this over to Alicia. Just an idea, I mean, because I know, pretty sure in our budget for next year, we don't have anything set for the 150th anniversary in there, so, thank you.
Mayor Poppy, just a clarification on that bill, it was for the three Public Works employees to take school, that's why it was exactly the same.
Thank you.
Any other matters on the floor? Matters on the floor? All right, matters on the floor are not closed. Number seven, no special business this evening, eight, public hearings, 8A, public hearing on 2025 Alley Project, welcome Allison.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So tonight, we have before you the public hearing for the proposed 2025 Alley Project. And thank you for loading my presentation. This would be the shortest presentation ever, but certainly weren't a good discussion here. I've included in the packet, as the presentation's loading, because we have so many different alleys, we went ahead and numbered them for ease, the alley numbers were included in your packet, so those should all correlate to what's included in both the memo and the presentation here. So here we are this evening with the public hearing. We have the alleys shown here, again, I'm not going to read off the locations, but we have nine alleys within the city that are proposed within the project. So Alley 1 here, circled in the map there on the top right corner. Just wanted to provide the council and residents, both here and that might be watching this in the future, just some of the pictures that were picked up this fall, when we were evaluating the alleys and what was out there. So here are some existing conditions of the surface of Alley 1. And then, again, we also, as we discussed at the feasibility report, we took a look at some of the existing drainage conditions with the slopes of the alley. And so we look at anything below half a percent, is it certainly a challenge that it would hold water? And then we have other areas that were between half and 2% that should have fairly good drainage, and then anything over 2% we highlighted in green. So we can see that we do have some challenges ahead, should the council authorize preparation of plans and specifications with this project. Then looking at Alley 2, here are some surface conditions, again, you can see the pavement deterioration throughout the alley. I tried to pick pictures that were represented, these are fairly short alleys, so conditions on both the north and south end of the alleys here. And again, with the existing slopes of this alley, we see that this particular alley is quite flat throughout, with a little bit of slope on each end as it connects to the street. Alley 3, we see some similar conditions as 1 and 2, as far as surface condition. However, in this one, we're seeing, we get a little bit more grade on this one, so we're getting, we anticipate seeing a little bit better drainage than the first two. Alley 4, existing photos, and again, quite flat throughout the majority of the alley, with the north end being, having a little bit more grade. Here we are at Alley 5. So these ones, you can, this one, particularly the photo on the left, I can, with my eye, I can kind of see the inverted crown on this particular alley, we see quite a bit of deterioration through that inverted crown. And this one, it's a little, it's a little flat there in the middle, with the remainder of the alley being between half and 2% grade. Alley 6, conditions, seen some vegetation start pop up through the pavement, it's deteriorated to that point that it's got a lot of cracks through it, vegetation's growing through. And this one, we see on the south end, that the drainage is, pardon me, that the existing grades are quite flat through the corridor. Alley 7, again, we're starting to see some vegetation pop up through that one crack on the left side. This one is a little bit of a mixed bag between quite flat and a little bit of drainage between half and 2%. Alley 8, this is one of the existing concrete alleys within the commercial area. These ones, because they're longer, we had a few more photos, so I wanted to provide council with a little more background here. We see some pavement panel, pardon me, some of the concrete panels have been replaced. Some wider cracks here as it meets up with the street. And this one, we see a little, we see most of the alleys between half and 2%, some good grades on the majority of the parking areas, with one area within the alley less than half a percent. And then finally, Alley 9, the yellow marks there are locates, that's a gas main. So we see, as we move through the corridor again, it's holding some water, a few cracks, quite a few cracks on the panels. And again, we, a little bit more of this alley has existing grades less than half a percent, with the area draining to it, with having between moderate and good drainage. So now moving on to the proposed improvements with the project. We are looking at removing and replacing the existing pavement, whether it's concrete or bituminous, with concrete pavement. Sanitary sewer, there are, there is some sanitary sewer within the commercial alleys. We have some of the retellvising back from Alley 8. There is a portion that still needs to be televised, about 200 feet, so we're working with a contractor to get them back in there and finish televising. With the sanitary sewer improvements, we are looking at and recommending adjusting the casting, which means taking the metal portion that you see on the surface and raising that or lowering it to meet the new grade of the alley. And then also chimney seals, that's sealing off that top part of the sanitary sewer manhole to reduce inflow and infiltration into the system. That's where clean water enters the sanitary sewer system, and you don't want that because you don't want to pay to clean water when it goes down to the treatment plant. As we presented, as was presented at the feasibility report, there's some proposed storm sewer extension, the council indicated a desire to do that, so I've included that in the presentation here on some of the later slides to show where that was proposed. And then we would also coordinate any private utility repairs that may need to occur through the corridor. So should council authorize preparations of plans and specifications, we would go ahead and prepare those notices, so that gas, electric, fiber, what have you, communications would have an opportunity to come in and do any improvements that they need within the corridor before a project is launched, so we try to get that work done ahead of time. So that's something that similarly happened this past year with CenterPoint Energy, they came through the single-family residential corridor and upgraded the lines there before the project started in that area. So the proposed improvements are a 12-foot wide concrete alley within a 16-foot wide right-of-way or easement. It would be six inches deep, and with an inverted crown, meaning instead of, like you would see with a street, where the high point of the street is in the middle, to shed water off to the side, to the curb and gutter, in an alley, it's what we call an inverted crown, so it looks like a V, and directs drainage to the middle of the alley, and then we rely on the grade in between the connecting streets to carry that drainage off. Or storm sewer, if we can get it through there. So as I mentioned, we are looking at removing the existing pavement and placing it with concrete, here's an example from a past project. And then again, moving through the alleys, so I've provided here the snips from the feasibility report that show the proposed storm sewer extension. And then I included then on the right side to show where we're seeing kind of that heat map, so to speak, where we're seeing some of the alley grades and where we're seeing it quite flat. So with this one, on Alley 1, we're looking at a storm sewer extension on the south side, hoping to pick up some of that drainage in the red area there. In Alley 2, we are looking at a storm sewer extension both on the north and the south side, which we would hope would benefit this alley, seeing as the majority of it is below half a percent grade. Alley 3, we see, we have, from the preliminary evaluation of the storm sewer, we're looking to get a storm sewer up further through the alley. This alley has quite a bit of grade, as indicated at the feasibility presentation, the council direction was looking at a desire to proceed with all the storm sewer improvements. So if council authorizes preparations of plans and specifications, and looks to, would like us to pull any of this storm sewer out of the plans, we would certainly look for that direction here this evening. Alley 4 here, we have, on the north side there, proposed storm sewer extension. Alley 5, we've got it on the south side. Alley 6 on the south side. And Alley 7 on the north side. Now we're moving into the commercial area, so we've got some storm sewer there on the north side. And then on Alley 9, it would be on the south side. So again, if council authorizes preparations of plans and specifications with the storm sewer extension, we would go ahead and get more detailed design with that storm sewer, trying to maximize that extension as much as we can, knowing that we have some flat grades in the majority of these alleys through here. As was presented at the feasibility phase of the project, we did take a look at the costs to convert the overhead lines in the commercial area to underground, due to the cost, not only to bury the over line, but also additional costs for the owners to convert services. We presented that to the council, and the direction provided at that time was not to proceed with that. And certainly, if that's a change in direction that the council would like to see, we would be looking for that direction this evening. But as of now, the team has been told that we would not be pursuing this improvement. We would be looking at construction information shared with the residents within this project, should it proceed. We've amped it that up a little bit this last year, the feedback I got was good, I would be interested to hear any feedback that the council may have heard from our public engagement efforts. We certainly want to provide people with as much up-to-date information as possible, whether it's through the phone hotline or an email update. We also do door hangers where there's direct impact to the property, and that would be with respect to driveways, when you don't have access to your driveway, that's when we usually have those door hangers. Then we also have sod notice that goes out once restoration's done, to help folks understand what sod, what to do with the sod, some things, you know, to stay off it, don't mow it, those sorts of things. So we've provided them that information as well. As I mentioned previously, when we looked at the proposed improvement, the alley width, we were looking at a 12-foot wide alley within 16 feet of right-of-way or easements. We are proposing to keep that work within the right-of-way or easement area. These projects tend to be a challenge, 16 feet's not a huge area to go and get these improvements completed. And if there's anything that comes up during design, we would certainly approach the council at that time. There are a couple places where the design team saw with that, the 30% plans that were prepared with this feasibility report, that we're getting really tight within that existing easement area, so we're going to see if we can pull that back, the alley back into the existing easement. It looks like it's strained out of the easement a little bit. We do have some right-of-way acquisition identified within the project, there are five properties, pardon me, six properties represented by five property owners. There's a property owner of two parcels in the commercial area, where acquisition is necessary. So five of the parcels are within the commercial area, and one's within the single-family residential. Those folks have been contacted, we did hear back from one of them, who indicated, asked for some clarification on that. And that being, in the proposed easement area, there's some existing parking. And so we worked with the city attorney's office and staff, and city staff, to get that clarified, because we thought that was a good point, to memorialize that within the easement document. And so we've prepared revised easements to distribute to those property owners. In addition to that, we also prepared an aerial photo with the proposed easement, so that folks could get a better visual on what the proposed easement acquisition is. So as we move forward through that, any council approval for those easements would be brought to the council at a future council date. As I mentioned, 16 feet, 16 feet easement or right-of-way is a little bit of a tight corridor, and we've seen with these past alley projects, there are times where we need a right-of-entry, which is property owner permission to enter the property beyond that easement, to get restoration work done, whether it's through cutting on their driveway to get a better grade, or if it's to get some grading within a green area, those sorts of things, it's quite typical with this sort of project. So we would work through that, through the design phase, identifying where those rights of entry would be necessary, and reaching out to the residents to come to an amicable solution there. So for the funding for this project, we have three components, both the alley surface, the sanitary sewer, and the storm sewer. The alley surface improvements are proposed to be paid both through the city road fund, which would include the 2022 bond that we've discussed in the past, and then, in addition to that, some assessments, and I'll go through the assessment component of that later on in the presentation, as council had directed staff to take a look at some alternative methodologies. And then the sanitary sewer improvements, that's the castings and the INI barriers or chimney seals, that would come from the sanitary sewer fund, that is not assessed. And then as directed by council, we've included the $375,000 in storm sewer improvements. As I mentioned, the project, portion of the project is proposed to be assessed according to Minnesota State Statute 429. Within the city's policy is that 80% of the alley surface costs are assessed, and then the remaining 20% is paid by the city. And then the public utility improvements are 100% paid by the city. All right, so assessments, I did a little bit of digging on this, based on the discussion at the feasibility stage of this project. One of the questions that came up were what the assessments were for the 2022 project. And we had 2022 assessments ranged between, I'm just looking at my packet here, here it is, between $4,710 and $8,550, with an average assessment being $5,936.25. So what I did is I went and took that, and I applied a 4% per year inflation cost to get that up to 2025 value, so that council could see what that average assessment would look like compared to what was prepared with the feasibility report. And so here you see that that inflation factor applied to the 2022 project is $6,677.47, and compared that to the 2025 project, in the preliminary assessment rules included in the feasibility report, which was $7,920. Also, we have commercial assessments within this project, within the 2022 project, the final assessment amount for that project was $80 a front foot, and for the 2025 project, the preliminary assessment amounts are $77 and $79 per front foot. So that's kind of where we're at with the range and averages. The range for the 2025 project, for a single family, on the low end is $6,040 a unit, and then we, the highest unit assessment in the feasibility report was $10,310. And the detailed cost estimates were included in the feasibility report, and copies of the preliminary assessment rule were included in the packet this evening. So included in the packet are some assessment options that the council may want to consider. With our discussion at the, when the feasibility report was presented, the council had indicated that the assessment amounts were getting to be high, and directed staff to come up with some alternatives. So this was my attempt to give some options for... So this was my, my attempt to give some options for council to consider, either, you know, working off some of these, expanding on some of them. It's certainly something that we, I can come back with if council wants to take a different direction. It has a lot of numbers in it, but what I wanted to do was highlight in white the, the, the numbers that were included in the staff report. So again, we start looking at preliminary assessments for this project averaging $7,920. So what I did is I started taking a look at, so if we, that's, that's applying the 80% assess, assessment methodology per the, per the policy. And so I just started taking that down a little bit. I went down to 75, 70, and 67% so that you can see the respective average single-family assessment included in, highlighted here in yellow and that, or in yellow, in white. And then I have also included what that would look like for each individual alley if that assessment methodology was applied. The 67% is, is a bit of an odd number when I, when I ratcheted down the other two by 5%. And the reason I landed at the 67% was to get the average assessment for single-family approximately equal to that 2022 average assessment inflated at 4% a year, just so that you could kind of get a flavor for what, what that assessment methodology would look like to try to get something that's comparable to what the 2022 project was. A lot of numbers this evening, but I, I wanted to present council with some, some considerations here. And then here we're seeing, in the commercial area, we've got $77 per front foot and $79 per front foot for alleys nine and alley eight per, respectively. I did not provide a breakdown of these commercial alleys, thinking that tonight there would be some discussion and some consideration from council. And at that point, I could certainly revise any preliminary assessment numbers as directed by the council, including the, the commercial alleys here. We held a neighborhood open house on November 7th. We had five residents that attended. That includes Mayor Poppy, was included in that total. And we had another person that was at a meeting just down the hall. So we had three residents within the project area attend and, and two people come that were not in the project area. We received two comment cards, which were included in the packet with some information redacted according to recommendations made by the city clerk. And we did hear some feedback from the, the open house that I wanted to, that I included both in the packet and here in the presentation. And one of them was with respect to, the, a resident questioned the equity of assessing property when there's no driveway access to the alley. Now, the, the conversation with, with this individual was an acknowledgement that the alley is used, for example, for garbage pickup and utilities. So they, they did acknowledge that, but they, they requested council consideration for that, that 80%, is that 80% equitable when they don't have a driveway? So in this instance, I'm pulling up alley two here where you see six of the nine properties that don't have a driveway into the alley. In the past practice, from what I found in my research, is that council has historically assessed, for, has historically assessed properties that don't have driveway access to an alley. But certainly, again, just wanted to bring this to council's attention. It was something that was brought up at the neighborhood open house. And again, wanted to provide council with some information on what not only has happened with past projects, but also what we're seeing included in this project. And I, so I had provided, I believe, further on in the, in the council report, a little bit of a breakdown of that. It would have been the page four of my report. And I apologize, I don't have the, the page number in the, from the packet. But the, for the 2022 project, we had approximately 40% of the residential properties did not have driveway access to the alley, and they were assessed. And looking at the, the 2025 project, we're seeing about 55% do not have driveway access to the alley. So again, wanted to provide this information to council and request council direction as far as policy for this particular project on assessing properties that do not have driveway access. Another question that came up at the open house was, when you, when you look at alleys, that certain properties have double the frontage of the other properties. And we're proposing in the preliminary assessment rule, a per-unit assessment. So each of these six properties would pay the same assessment. And you have two of the four, pardon me, two of the six properties that have double the frontage. So again, included in the packets, I provided, for the 2022 project, we had about 5% of the properties where, that were, you know, double the width approximately of others on the, within the project. And then in this, in the 2025 project, we're seeing about 18%, 10 of the 56 residential properties that are double the width. So if the council wants to see some alternative assessment methodologies presented, we can certainly do that. Again, looking for council direction with this concern that was brought up at the open house. So next steps in schedule, this evening is the public hearing. And included in the packet is a resolution, should the council wish to do so, to order the improvement. Because this is a statute 429 process, in order for the improvement to be ordered, we would need a supermajority vote, which is four votes. And so we have four council members here this evening, with council member Holtstrom being absent. So that's, I just wanted to make that clear for the council. When making, when having these discussions, it's not to certainly, certainly not to sway any decisions, but it's to have a full understanding of the vote that would be necessary in order to proceed with final design for the project. And if that's ordered here this evening, we would be looking to have design completed December through January so that we could get this project out for bid early in 2025 to open bids in February, and then hold the assessment hearing in March with construction taking place between May and October of 2025. So again, with that, the recommendation from staff is to hold the public hearing and then request for council to approve the resolution to order the improvement. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions or providing clarification with what's been presented here this evening.
Questions, council?
Yes.
Rebecca, you're here.
Would you like to come up to the mic for a minute?
I don't have a presentation, but I can answer questions.
I, I, you will, you will answer the question.
Okay, Rebecca Kurtz from LRS, yes.
I believe there's $403,000 approximately, not to the penny, left from the 2022 bond, correct?
Correct.
We have to spend that by what date?
So when we say left, there is 400, about 400,000
Right.
that was unspent bond proceeds from the 2022 issue.
Correct.
There have been discussions on how that can be used. And I know one of the options that has been discussed is using that to reduce or assist with the proposed 2025 improvement project, which is an eligible use. There also, my understanding is, have been discussions to use that in the future to assist with keeping the levy lower in future years. So using a percent of that over the next few years to help stabilize the levy so it doesn't see an increase. And so I guess I just want to clarify that it can be done one or the other, but that is a bigger discussion, that if it is used for the 25 project, then it cannot be used to assist with keeping the levy for the 22 bonds lower in the future. As far as when it needs to be spent, 85% needs to be expended by August. There are a lot of arbitrage rules that go with that. And so I will say, when we get direction on what the plans are for that, we can work with city and staff to make sure that we are meeting those rules as it relates to spend down and then investing or making sure that those funds are managed until that point of when they may be spent.
Thank you. It was under my impression, and I believe at least one other council member, that this would be spent on this project since it had to be, it was originally intended for that, for the purpose of alleys and streets. And I'm going to stick to, I want, I want a big chunk of that, at least 80% of that to be put onto this project to help keep the cost down. I want at least $300,000 to go to that project, if not more.
And I will say, just to be clear, when I say helping the levy as it moves in the future years, that would then write, those funds from 2022 would write down the levy portion of, the city's levy portion connected with the 2022 bond debt levy.
Mm-hmm.
So it wouldn't just be writing down generally the levy, but it would be allocated specifically for writing down the debt levy connected with the 2022 improvement bonds.
And about how many, excuse me, about how many pre-pays did we have? Because I know that should be taken into consideration too, as to where that money is sitting.
I do not have that number, but I can, we can work with staff to get that for the council. I don't have that number.
I know in the past, we always had an approximate number, how many we're going to prepay. And that was, that was very important. You're looking at Gary.
About 90,000.
Only about 90,000 was prepaid? Okay, so that's not a huge number.
Right.
So again, I, I want to see a big chunk of that money go to this project because it was originally intended for streets and alleys. And that's what I thought we talked about last time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Stay there. So when we talk about the unspent bond proceeds, I don't know that that's technically, I mean, technically, that's true. But some of that money has already been used to offset the previous annual bond payments. Like, for example, do you know, and I think you probably come close, what is our average city portion of that bond payment per year?
You had it right around 130-ish?
I was going to say right around 130, 140. I don't have.
That's, that's fair enough.
Okay.
Okay, so looking at that, that 130, so that 400K left over that wasn't spent on the project, we've already spent some of that money. And before we assessed, we had to cover, you know, because that was floated back in '22. We didn't get any payments at all in, to begin, until this project kicked off. So we already had to spend some of that money. So as I understood it from our last conversation, we don't, well, that's technically a number. That's not really what's left there.
There were, there has, have been some bond payments that needed to be paid. And as the timing from when that first interest payment came in to when the levy and assessments start coming in excluding the prepaid's, there was a small portion of it that has been paid, correct?
Do you have any idea about what that, because that would technically take off of this reserve number?
Yes, it, I believe there's like roughly 350 ballpark.
Okay, 350 left?
Left, yes, correct.
And when you talk about the other part of it, when you talk about keeping the levy down, as this was originally done and began to be paid, to keep the levy down, so there's, you know, there's what we spend, okay? And then there's what, it's allocated in our general fund budget, but there is debt service on top of all that, okay? That we don't really talk about, all right? So from that perspective, as I understand it, tell me if, if I remember this incorrectly, and Gary, you can hop in here by coming up to the mic if you need to, the reality of this particular situation, to keep that levy down and not tack that on for like specifically this year, for example, that's going to be a certain number, you know, of money that's going to, again, go against that so that we don't have to put that into the debt service to keep our, our levy down. That's what we discussed, right? Okay, so with, on this current one, that probably, was that going to be another 50 grand?
Current.
So for this current budget?
Yes.
Out of that money, it's going to be about another 50 grand, which.
It actually is not needed for this 25. The 50 grand that we have discussed was not incorporated into the 25 budget, but would start in likely '26.
Okay, the '26 budget, okay. So that, and that's the, that's the challenging part as we work through this in the budget process, is to make sure that this money is accounted for so we don't end up getting out here, you know, a year or two and be like, okay, you guys just spent what was left. And now all of a sudden, you got to put a bunch of stuff back on to the overall taxpayer, which then it's almost, kind of think of it like getting hit twice. You know, and so, you know, so when I'm processing through that kind of stuff, I, I don't disagree with you on trying to utilize some of those funds that are left over to help to write down the overall cost of this project. I'm personally not a huge fan because we've already worked through changing the assessment policy in alleys one time over my tenure because it used to be 100% to the residents, so then we went back down. And every time we go down, that costs that resident less, but costs everybody else more. Okay, because when the individual resident through the assessment process, and we're not set up to, to bear that burden right now. You know, if we wanted to start a fund where we had no more assessments after everything is built out, it's something that the council can discuss doing, but it would raise our bottom line taxable amount to the resident, kind of like you do with the utility fund where it's paid out and then it accrues over time and we don't have to reassess again. So that's an opportunity for future discussion. But I just need to make sure that before we commit it, that we know exactly what that number remains so that, because we need hard numbers to make this calculation, right? So that's a big, huge thing for me regarding this particular topic. Just make sure we know what the actual number is so that if we do move to bring that in, we're doing it in the right fashion and that we all agree, but that we know what the impact's going to be, the '26 budget.
Mayor Poppy.
Yep.
With that scenario, then it's only seven years, and in year eight and on, you're going to end up with that 50,000 going on. And I think this 300 to $350,000 would benefit the property owners, directly benefit the property owners. Again, I go back to my interpretation from law firms about 429 that we have to, or we can only assess what the property value will increase. And that's stated in the statute. And the city attorney can give her piece, whatever. But again, I've talked to several attorneys about it, and we can only assess what the state says is what the property value go up. And I'm afraid that if we do this and we go through with this high assessment on these alleys, somebody along the line is going to, going to challenge us and then we're going to start, be stuck with this whole bill for, for a million dollars. And that's going to go across the board. And if we tried, if we go ahead and put this 300 to $350,000 on this project, we're going to keep that cost down and it's going to be palatable for the property owners, as was in my area. Because almost every one of them, we're, we're going to join the lawsuit unless the, the assessment came down. So we, we staved off one. Now, do we need to say, okay, let's roll the dice? And if somebody does challenge it, then we're out a million dollars plus court fees, attorney's fees, and then pay their attorney's fees? I'm not willing to roll the dice that way. I'm willing to throw the $300,000 at this project.
Mr. Mayor?
I think for, I think I'm somewhere in the middle here, to be perfectly honest. I think, because I think there is a, I think there is a, it's very, very important for us to look at the long-term, big picture when we start to make these decisions and making sure that we're not putting ourselves in difficult financial positions three years, four years, five years down the line. But I also agree with you. You know, I think we, I think we are in a time right now where we're going to talk about truth and taxation here in a little bit, and taxes and levies and all that kind of stuff. And we're still in this sort of post-COVID economy type things where people are struggling. And so to try to minimize the impact on the residents in the city, I think, is, is really, really important. So that's where I think clarification on some of these numbers might be, might be really the most important step in the sense of, what does it look like if we give 350? What does it look like if we give three? What does it look like if we give 250? What does that do? What does that look like three, four, or five years down the line? And looking at some of those scenarios to make sure that we aren't putting ourselves in a bad situation down the line. But I, I don't think it's an all or not. I don't think it's a, it's either, you know, it's, it's not black and white. I think that there's a gray area in there in the sense of, and I think maybe it might just be about finding what that number is that makes sense to help, help citizens of the community as best we possibly can, but also protect the city as a whole long-term financially, I guess, is, is my, is my thought.
Mr. Mayor, I want to be clear, I don't disagree with using the money. That's not my, that's not my point. I just want to make sure that I, that we verbally understand the implications. the implications, not only short, but long-term of what that looks like. And then also moving ahead, long-term vision, what can we do to help mitigate some of this stuff going ahead? You know? And I don't think whether we were to chop, you know, one thousand, two thousand, when it comes right down to it on the proposed alley assessment, what seems like a lot of money, a third of it, nobody wants to pay that money, ever. So it doesn't matter how good we do it, there's always going to be somebody that, that's upset about it. So it's like, you just kind of, in this role, you just kind of live with the fact someone's mad at you all the time. And it's just kind of the way it goes.
Can I ask a clarification question? And I don't know who, maybe you might have the answer to this. But somebody came up during matters of the floor and talked about how they're still paying a previous assessment? Is that, I mean, that's, that's, and how long is that in place for?
Twenty-nine, I think it is.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
So to your question, I was going to bring up, as we got to that point, that we push off the commercial part through, up until two thousand and thirty.
I think, I think if we're asking.
I'd look at it, it's not bad.
Yeah, I think if we're asking businesses on Central to be paying multiple assessments at the same time, I don't, I'm not, I don't, I'm not super comfortable with that, so.
We still haven't fixed those sidewalks yet.
Right.
In those same areas that are deteriorated either.
Yeah.
We're still facing that project.
That's, again, goes back to our tax law for Central Avenue that no one was supposed to pay other than the businesses up and down Central Avenue. Next year, we're about almost one hundred and forty-eight, one hundred and forty-five thousand to all the residents that weren't supposed to pay a dime originally. So that's, some of these implications of, oh, this, use this money here and shell game this, and it has implications on the entire city for a long time.
And that's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm just trying to get, make sure that we're open in dialogue, to make sure we understand, not only, because is it super easy to be like, sure, let's put three hundred thousand at this, and maybe that's the right number, whatever. Super easy to say, we're going to reduce this for these people on this project, but then what about the next project? The next project, the next project. And we are kind of bound to this a little bit, with that eighty-five percent of the remaining numbers, because of the nature of how all that went to get spent. So it's just a matter of making sure that whatever process we decide, we agree on how all this is going to work. And I also want to point out too, that there's two other opportunities moving forward to kill this project. So even if we go through with design phase and everything going out forward from here, we still have two other opportunities after we have these final numbers that we can say, no, we don't want to do it.
Are there, let me ask, are there residential homes that are still paying assessments on some of the streets, the street projects, the curbs, the sidewalks, that kind of stuff?
Oh, yeah.
And that are now going to get dinged with this alley project too?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there's a lot of them.
Same thing.
Yeah.
Same as the commercial business, then.
Yeah, I mean, like in my house, I paid for the alley, and I'm paying for my side street. And I don't have any access to my alley. So I have two assessments on mine.
You have two now?
Yep.
The only thing I was told was by Public Works that one of the alleys has a raised-up piece of concrete, and I couldn't find it. They said they were, they were afraid that when they plowed it in the wintertime, that that plow would hit that and could do damage to the truck. I didn't see it, and I walked the alleys, and I, I'd probably have to ask Public Works to give me a clarification exactly where that is. And maybe it raises it in this project area. And maybe it only happens when spring thaw, or, you know, when the ground does its thing here in Minnesota.
Yep.
So maybe, you know, maybe it hasn't come up yet, because it isn't frozen. I don't know. But I'm on the same, same principle that you're talking about, about the, the commercial district, if it isn't really bad, you know, if we can stave it off, because we're going to have to replace it anyways, if we can get away with it for, what, four or five more years? Because like Duffy, I'm going to use you, Martin Duffy said, he's already paying for Central Avenue, and that was a big chunk. But we did have, we did originally have a fund that started back a long time ago, where we were putting money aside to put in the bank for assessments. And somewhere along the line, it disappeared. It got put into something else.
Oh, I remember it was back, coming after that Central Avenue project. By the time that was all said and done, we had thirty grand left in the street fund. So I don't know where that money went, if that fund was there. That was before my time.
Yeah. And it was set up for X amount of dollars per year to go to twenty, thirty. And at that time, it'd have enough to, any project you did would, would come out of that fund, and it was self-sufficient from that point on.
City assessment starter, it was about a hundred and, almost a hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year to the residents on Central Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just going to ask two questions real quick. One, uh, do we have the information, all of the information that we need to approve a resolution at this point in time?
And this is a resolution, a plan.
No, no, and I, that's, I totally understand.
And we do it that, but we don't for the assessment portion of it.
Second question is, given that, that this needs a super majority, or I think that's what you called it.
Yep, super majority, yep.
Um, and we're down a member, does it make sense to potentially move this to the next meeting? Or is that, is that through all the whole process?
I, I'm in agreement with, with Councilmember Cook. We need to get some more numbers. You know, if we want to just get plans and specs, that's not a problem. I'd, I'd go for plans and specs. But moving anywhere on.
Well, Mayor, and I just, I just want to follow up on that point, process-wise, and this is maybe for people who are here tonight too. So the public hearing tonight is to vote on ordering the improvements. There's still time to talk about assessments. That's a separate, I mean, you could talk about, you've talked about that a lot already, but as far as there's more opportunity to discuss assessments, and there will be a hearing, a public hearing scheduled now for March. So tonight, the public hearing is about the improvements and ordering those improvements, so it's not about adopting assessments tonight. So I just wanted to make sure that people understood the process in terms that there will be more opportunity for the council to talk about the bond, to talk about what the assessments, you know, whether you want to make adjustments to those or not, so.
So just in disclosure, I'm, I'm, personally, I would approve to, I would vote to move forward with the, with this particular engine item, realizing that we still have some work to do on the other stuff in the assessment part. So I'm in agreement with Mark and what John said.
I, I don't have a problem with the plans and specs.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little on the, on the fence on, on ordering the improvement.
Nope, no, we don't need that, do that yet.
Yeah, but I, I think part of the discussion, and again, we have to open a public hearing at some point and, and then close that for additional comment, but I think at this point, we can also be part of the discussion of removing the commercial district out of the plans and specs.
That would come now.
That would come now.
Tonight, Ty is ordering the improvements.
Yes.
That's, that's the resolution, not the assessments.
Just order, we're ordering the improvement and preparation of plans and specs.
Engineer can, can address it further, but that's the action proposed for tonight.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, so there might be some, ordering the improvement sounds like the council's just like, yep, we're going to do it as, as presented. That's the way the statute is, is stated. What ordering the improvement means is that there's a resolution included in the packet that the council's asked to vote on this evening that authorizes the preparation of plans and specifications. And that's why we need that super majority vote. And so the next, the next steps that you would see coming back to the council is that you would have, and I didn't include it here specifically, but we would have approval of plans and specifications and authorize ad for bid that would come in January. And then bidding would take place, and we'd open bids in February, and we would come back with assessment hearing, you know, calling the assessment hearing, that sort of thing in the spring, March timeframe. And that's when the final numbers would be presented for a final assessment role, based on what council direction is at that time.
Thank you for that clarification. I'm always focused on the statutory language, right?
Yes, and, and to, it's, I can see why there's, when you say ordering the improvement, it sounds like everything's signed, sealed, and lived.
We're a long way from that.
Can I, so just to clarify here on the, because it kind of sounds like there's kind of a consistent message up here that potentially removing the commercial alleys from this project, would that happen in this, would we have to add something in this resolution? Or would you just move forward with this design process, knowing that the commercial part would be?
Possibly moved.
Potentially removed.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cook, we can, we can do this as a council would like direct, however you'd like to direct us to do that right now, this, that's fine. So specifically, if the council wants to continue, if the council would like to keep the, the commercial properties in there at this time, and then once we get, present the plans and specifications to go for bid, and at that time you say, you know what, let's cull this from the project, we don't want to do it, we can certainly do it at that time. But that, that would be the, the timeframe of, you know, when that clock would end, as far as are you keeping it in or not?
Let me ask one other question. Does removing the commercial part of the project impact the cost of the residential part of the project?
Mayor Poppy, Councilmember Cook, I would, I, I think you have a large enough project here with the residential alleys that you would still see some, you'd see some cost savings, some good, good pricing coming in from contractors, playing it out when you, you now have two alleys remaining within the city for reconstruction. Might, you might see some, a little bit higher pricing at that time when you're just doing two alleys instead of nine.
But again, you could do the two alleys if something happens on Central Avenue at the pavers, and that could be looped into that. I mean, there's ways to incorporate that with other things, yeah.
Which, which that money is still sitting out there in the infrastructure bill.
Right.
For Central Avenue.
Right.
Of X amount of dollars.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor. Yep. But also removing the commercial part of this at this time will also have a positive impact on the design cost, because they don't have to design that stuff.
Right.
So we can save money in the design part by removing that now.
Yeah.
We don't have to put the storm sewer in there. There's, I think there's one in each one.
Yep.
Correct.
There's one in each one.
Yeah, so that saves money there.
Yeah, because they can't put that storm sewer in with the alley in place, so.
Right, right.
I feel like if there's an overwhelming support to not do the commercial part of the project right now, we should just eliminate that part from the project now, so we're not wasting time.
I agree.
I agree. That's, I think it's, as approved without alleys eight and nine.
Mr. Mayor.
But, yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
But do, we have to have the public hearing first?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Public hearing.
Yeah, we have to have the public hearing first, before you make any motions. So I need, unless you're making a motion, open the public hearing.
I was, actually.
I was just making sure. I, I wasn't hearing correctly, I thought, maybe, so, okay. So I'm going to motion my Councilmember Schultz to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilmember Cook. Any further questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes four to zero. The public hearing is open at eight oh two. So if anyone has any comments about the project, again, it's not the assessments at this point, just the overall project, please step forward, state your name and address, and address the council.
I just had a couple of questions. The storm sewer extensions, looks like it's on every single alleyway. Do we know when we're planning on doing any, any other project on those streets that we're going to tear up, like a mill and overlay? You know, I'm just trying to understand if we can all tie this all together here. The other, the other fact of, there's two more options to stop this project. We heard that all in twenty twenty. Heard that all day long. We could have listened to the residents that didn't want sidewalks. We didn't. So if you vote yes now, you are putting it in the hands of basically three people, okay? We could have saved, I, I figured it about, it was about a hundred and twenty thousand on the whole project by not doing the sidewalks, keeping the road same width. We had an issue already once during the winter where Public Works had to come in and clean up the snow. So I just want to let the residents know, when they say you got two more opportunities to make adjustments, I haven't seen it. Thank you.
But you're also forgetting the time that project came up and we stopped the project. So, I mean, you can't just say negative facts constantly.
Was it because you took money from another project to do something else with it?
No, we canceled it and waited another year.
Okay.
Bids were too high, so let's make sure we're clearing all facts here.
All right, so I know there was a mention of using this bond money down, down the line. When does the TIF come up again? When's that over with on five Central?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, so there's quite a bit more money coming in too.
Yep.
So I just want to make sure everybody understands that when they vote too. Thank you.
Mayor Poppy, just in response, as you're a citizen, the, I wasn't a part of the council at the time, but the council did listen to the residents over on the twenty twenty-four project to not put the sidewalk in.
Oh, correct, yes. Yes, yes, yes.
So the council did listen.
Exactly.
Yeah. And then also during the twenty twenty-two, or twenty twenty street project, they decided to listen to anonymous people versus people that spoke. So it's not all good, it's not all bad. But yes, you did that with the twenty, the last project, street project. So I apologize.
Go on, Eighth Avenue. I'm just trying to, really hard, trying to wrap my head around this whole thing, that the alleys are costing more money than the streets and curbs we put in, per, per, per household. I, I don't get it. You know, six thousand eight, six, seven thousand for the streets, and now seven thousand for the alleys? And the property that I'm talking about is on Sixth Avenue, no, no driveway access, just garbage. It's ridiculous. And, and this whole thing with concrete, I, I think it's just ridiculous. For, for the traffic that gets on those alleys versus the traffic that goes on the streets, it's way out of control, in my opinion.
Taking a look back at the street project that was concrete, how long did this, this concrete last before it had to be patched? I just, the first thing I saw, I said, why, why are we looking at concrete in this, in this project? How much is it, what's the difference in concrete to asphalt for this, for this project? I think that needs to be looked at closely. Also, the street project, the damage to the concrete, this is Minnesota, the ground heaves and moves, and it didn't take long for that concrete to go to, go bad. And I think you're going to find the same thing in the alley, so why not use concrete? I mean, use asphalt. I don't know, maybe, maybe it's not an option, but that was the first thing I thought of when I heard that we were talking about this, was asphalt.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Some would.
Okay, I'm going to motion my Councilmember Schultz to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Councilmember Hall.
You were waiting for me.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes four to zero. The public hearing is closed at eight oh eight. Okay, would someone like to, additional conversation from that, or would somebody like to make a motion?
Again, I'm, I'm with the rest of the council. I believe that, you know, we're going to look at getting some of that money from that bond and possibly taking out the commercial areas.
Yeah, I think that would be part of the motion.
Yeah, yeah.
It would be, is removing the commercials, that is eight and nine.
You know, and I, and I feel bad for, you know, a party like yourself that has to have two assessments, you know, residential property. And to answer one of the questions, we did change, or not we, because I wasn't on the council, neither was Mr. Cook, but the rest of the council at the time did change the policy. It went from fifty percent on the streets down to twenty-five, because it was a totally different animal than we had been dealing with. Instead of a mill and overlay, which was no cost, or a complete reconstruction was fifty percent, this was a reclamation, which was a total different animal. And it did save the city a ton of money, probably sixty percent on that project cost to do it that way. And it turned out an excellent project, as far as I can see, except for one party that's complaining about their driveway that's too steep. But other than that, you know, it's, it worked out great. The sod worked out great. The notices were great. worked out great. The notices were great. The people you had out there were great. So if that continues, I, I think this, this is going to be a great project going through. And again, if we can keep that cost down, we need to keep the cost down, like Mr. Cook said. You know, we're still in this balancing act coming out of COVID and inflation is still, nobody knows really where it's going to go and what's going to happen with the new administration coming in in January. So, you know, it could go sky high again or it could drop and values could drop and there could be a lot happening, but nobody knows for sure. We don't have a crystal ball.
Yep.
I got a snow globe, but, you know, I shake it and I can't see anything.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the, the resident that, Mr. Duffy, that asked about the, the asphalt compared to concrete. I did speak to another resident earlier today about that who had asked the same question. So if I may just provide counsel with a little bit of discussion, food for thought with regards to that. So asphalt is not a product that we typically look at convey, to convey drainage. So when you look at a residential street that's bituminous, the crown, the middle of the road is higher than the sides of it to drain that water off to the side to the concrete curb and gutter. The concrete curb and gutter is more durable to take that drainage. When we look at these alleys, and I, and I understand that, you know, they, they don't carry the traffic that a street does typically. They do take those, they do take the garbage trucks, which are a lot heavier than a recreational, not a recreational vehicle, but a personal vehicle like a truck or a car. But the, those alleys, as I mentioned previously, have the, the inverted crown or a V and are intended to convey drainage. So that's one reason why we are looking at concrete for the alleys. And the other, another consideration for the concrete versus the asphalt is, as I mentioned, we have a lot of alleys that either all our portion are less than half a percent. And a paving contractor to pave a grade that drains at less than half a percent with bituminous is very difficult. As an example that I can bring to, that some of the councils familiar with is from the 2020, 2022 alley project. We had one driveway that was holding some water and so we were working to get that resolved. And when we looked at replacing it with an asphalt driveway, the contractors that we contacted to do the work said, we can't do it. We will not do that as a, as an asphalt driveway because it's too flat. We can't guarantee we can get it to drain. However, with concrete, they have more control with it with the forms and what have you. So those are all things to take into consideration when looking at asphalt versus concrete. It's certainly not meant to hold the council's hand as far as proceeding with concrete, but I just wanted to address Mr. Duffy's question as well as, and these are the same things that I spoke to the resident about earlier today and wanted to share that with the council as well.
I've got, I've got an additional question. Allison, you know, over in my area, there was, there was approximately five inches of bituminous by, for the first layer than the wear coat. And that's for just, and we don't have much traffic down in our area, which would be probably about the same as what an alley should be. And there was question as to, was that thick enough? Would an alley have to be thicker to accommodate the pounds per square foot that concrete would be able to carry?
Mayor Poppy, Councilmember Hall, that's, that's a great question and to be very honest, is, is beyond my knowledge base when it comes to pavement design. If that's something that the council would like some more information on, I can certainly bring that information back to the council. I think that we've looked at the six inches of concrete pavement as far as durability because we know that's where the garbage and recycling trucks are going week after week. But I can, I can provide counsel with a little more comparison on what that six inch pavement design is for strength versus what we put in the 2024 project.
Yeah, I thought it was like 30 to 50 years different. You know, one was, the asphalt was 30 and the concrete was 50.
That was our original conversation is, is that on these, these concrete alleys based on the loads and things like that, we're talking about a lifespan of 50 plus years.
Yeah.
And so when you do that lifespan out like that versus bituminous, you also then have continual patching maintenance progress that then gets put on, on the city. And I think it's important for us to recognize that the city doesn't, we don't make our own money. It's everybody's money that has a part of all this stuff. And so that's why the original movement was there because the council at the time felt that, and that's also why we changed the assessment policy, because we knew that concrete would be more expensive than bituminous. And so that was the, that was a trade off so that we were setting the next 40 years of, of council people and the next 40 years of budget to not have to maintain that alleyway like they've had, had to do for years on that, on the remaining bituminous alleys.
Right. And again, bituminous and should be seal coated every, what, seven years, Allison, approximately?
Mayor Poppy, Councilmember Hall, seal coats, we would actually, the current recommendations are to come in, I believe, like year three or four.
So then we'd, we'd be seal coating at an extra cost on bituminous. And then I'm sure that to, to suffice in that alley instead of the five inches, we'd probably sit, be sitting somewhere on six to eight inches, which would drive the cost up and then seal coating. And not to say the concrete's 100% great, but that should also be sealed once in a while, too. I know it's recommended on driveways, you know, you have your own concrete driveway, you're supposed to be seal, sealing that, you know, and that's, it's a cheap fix for a homeowner. They can do it with a paint roller, et cetera. But, you know, it's something that needs also be done, you know, to, to keep it from scaling, peeling, however you want to call it. And then again, you've got cracks in it. You've got, you've got the cuts that you have to saw cut and that should be, you know, on both of them. It's, they're both products because we live in Minnesota, we have the freeze thaw, and we have to look at that. And what's going to be the actual longest lasting in concrete seems to be the best. And that's, if you look at what the highway department's doing, MINDOT, they're going with concrete and they're looking at long range.
Yeah, Mayor Poppy, Councilmember Hall, as, as far as sealing concrete, I'd have to certainly look into that. I'm not sure from a, like a, for an alley or a traveled way that that's an application that's put forward, but we could certainly look at, you know.
They normally don't do it on, on a road like that. They just let it go.
Concrete, not that I'm aware of.
Right.
But I, my experience with concrete is certainly a lot less than my experience.
In the residential, again, it's, you know, it's only three and a half inches thick, you know, for a normal driveway. So, you know, they're trying to keep it lasting, you know, they're, they're, I believe, last contractor I talked to said 30 to 35 years for a concrete driveway where if you seal coat it every year, that's the recommendation for a regular bituminous driveway, you know, that cost dries up. But then, you know, you still get cracks. So it's, you know, it's a horse apiece, but concrete will last longer than bituminous.
And that's the nature of the saw cuts or the cuts in the concrete panels is that we can predict more accurately where that's going to happen.
Exactly.
Manage it versus in a, in a nonstop paving situation, they just pop up wherever the ground decides to move.
Exactly.
And so that was the original concept behind it all is, is that in the long run, for all of the residents of the community, it would be less expensive to do this right now than to drag it out. So that's where that original policy came from.
That, would someone like to make a motion? Page 65 in your packet.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Like to make a motion to adopt the attached resolution ordering improvements, preparation plans and specifications for the 2025 alley reconstruction project minus the commercial portion.
Okay, I've got a motion by councilmember Schultz to approve the resolution ordering the improvements minus the commercial areas. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my councilmember Cook. Any further discussion? Seeing none, attorney teaching, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is resolution number 66. Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Cook.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Mayor Poppy.
Aye. Motion passes four to zero. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
All right. 8B, truth and taxation.
Mayor and council, we'll get the PowerPoint up here in just a second. So this is the City of Osseo's truth and taxation, public hearing we will have after some conversation. So we are here tonight to listen to public comments about the proposed city portion of your total property tax for 2025. We are not here to discuss or defend the value of your property set by the Hennepin County Assessor. And you'll see in some of my future, some of my future PowerPoint slides where we took and broke down from like four different residences in town. The comments tonight should be focused on the proposed city levy for 2025 resulting from the budget to be adopted by city council on December 9th, 2024. What determines the city portion of your property tax? The change in the value of the property is set by the Hennepin County Assessor. The change in the effective city tax rate caused by the overall tax levy and the value of your property. The legislative change to market value exclusion affects the computation net, net tax capacity for the first time in 2025. So when we just had some meetings with the tax assessor from Hennepin County, the average home value in Osseo for 2024 is 288,850. 2025 would approximately be about 1.1% lower. So property values are determined by the Hennepin County Tax Assessor for taxes payable in 2015 through 2024. Most residential properties in Osseo have increased significantly in value, but then this year or next year in 2025, it decreased approximately 1.1%. The cause of the increase or decrease in property values is the actual single family residential sales that occurred in Osseo. When residential properties are being sold at higher prices, overall property values increase, which in turn increases the taxes payable by all So this gives you an estimated median market value graph on what's been going on for the last several years. As you can see, there was some steep increases in values from 2013 all the way up until 2024, where we're starting to see for 2025, a little bit of a dip. Residential property values went up in 2024 to that record high, and then they're starting to level off. 2013 was the lowest value at 131,000. The preliminary tax levy shows an increase in the tax rate from 2024, a 64.8% to 69.9%. This is an increase of 5.16%. The city council budget and finance committee and staff have worked since September 30th to reduce the budget in the total that you see this evening. The general fund budget expenditures have been reduced by 252,820 and the tax levy has been reduced by 400,520. This lower general fund budget and levy are approved, you will have a lower city portion property tax payment payable in 2025 than your current proposed tax statement letter shows. According to Hennepin County Assessor, 2025 will see a slight decrease in property values across the county. County expense raise evaluation to slow considerably heading into 2025. So here are some of the changes that we even discussed in our work session earlier tonight. But the proposed tax levy for the equipment bonds was 77,000. Debt service for this issue will be financed with funds available in the Equipment Capital Improvement Fund. The proposed tax levy included the addition of full-time city administrator. This position has been combined with the responsibilities of the police chief. The com, the combined position reduces both general fund expenditure budget and tax levy by 104,500. The proposed tax levy included the addition of two police officers, starting in April and July of 2025. The start dates of these two officers has been moved back to July and October, reducing the expenditure budget and tax levy by more than 62,000. The proposed tax levy and expenditure budget have been reduced by 61,300 to reflect the actual salary increases and benefit costs for 2025. Lease revenue previously credited to the water fund has been credited to the general fund, reducing the tax levy by 60,000. And then there's some smaller adjustments have been made in the general fund budget and levy increases and decreases. So here's our local tax capacity rate. As you can see, it was 2013, it was a high of 77.35%. Generally has gone down and then had a big jump in 2024 and then a smaller jump here in 2025. So where are your property tax dollars going? So here it shows that 43% of your tax dollars that you spend on your home come to the City of Osseo. Hennepin County gets 23%. The school district gets 30%. And then there's some Met Council stuff that comes in at 4%. So if you're looking here at your City of Osseo portion of your taxes with the proposed tax levy was from 1600 to 1700 and a plus of about 6.75%. And that was the proposed. And you can see where Hennepin County is at, where the school district is pretty minimal, if nothing. And then there's some other taxes with Met Council. You can see those changes. So for an overall total of a 4.39% to your total taxes, property taxes. So here is a breakdown of some actual residents in the City of Osseo. So if you can see, and this is where we're going to show the homestead exclusion and how that affects your taxable rate at your house. Oh, okay, we're good? Okay. So you have in 2024, an estimated market value of 292,000. You had a homestead exclusion of 10,960. So your taxable market value is 281,040. So with the city tax capacity rate at 65.2%, city taxes due is 1832.24. And then that's, that was 2024. If you go to 2025, you can see where that preliminary came in with that, was it 22% ish increase? You can see our tax capacity rate was at 80%, almost 81%. And then your due at your taxes would have been 2,101.35. Now, 2025, this is our, where we're at now. You can see a $281,000 house. You can see here where that homestead exclusion went up, $11,000 ish. That's where we start seeing that taxable market value go down. And that's what we had talked about earlier. Our city tax capacity rate is 69.96%. So cities, city taxes due is 1817, which comes out to a decrease of $14.36 in the city's portion with our current proposed tax levy. If that goes through, it's the final. And we're, so we, we have some more examples in here. I'm not going to go through each one, but this is again estimated market value 244. This year in 2025, it's 238. Like we said, we started seeing some decreases in values. This homestead exclusion breaks it from 229 down to 212. Our current tax rate goes from 1495 in 2024 to 1489, which is a, oop. There it is, sorry. There's a decrease of $6.56 from 24 to 25.
And these are actual statements that we received from the county. So these are based on actual examples for the, for the city.
Can we mark that one up, too, please? So again, here's another one, 289, 200. In 2025, it's 282, 500. So it went up $300. You can see that taxable market, or homestead exclusion, I'm sorry, went up $10,000. So the taxable market value went down. And again, we're seeing your final tax, city tax per statement is 1812. In the 2025, it's 1828, so $15.89 increase. So why are city taxes increasing? We added two police officers in July and October. Full-time staff, medical and dental insurance costs are increasing. That's a 12% increase across the city. We're adding a full-time fire chief. That's just for the full year. Administrative costs, costs are decreasing by 22% or about $91,000. Public safety, including police and fire, increased 18% and public works increased by 14%. So there's questions. I would, I would ask the council to either.
Open the public.
Open the public hearing. We want to do that.
Can I pick a motion?
We need a motion to open the public hearing, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to open up the public hearing.
Okay, a motion by councilmember Cook to open the public hearing. Second, my councilmember Hall. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes four to zero. The truth and taxation public hearing is open at eight 29. If you have any questions, comments, please come forward.
I don't think we have anything in the budget.
I don't think we have anything in the budget for the 150th anniversary, is that correct?
These are truth and taxation, this isn't budget comment, so.
Well, that's all plays in with our taxes, doesn't it?
It's specific budget related question, so.
All right, so like, he mentioned how we got to this with adding the two police officers and everything like that. I mean, the door was open, was it not?
But what is your question?
Do we have any money in the budget for the 150th anniversary?
Apparently it's through donations, next question.
What happens if our city administrator is no longer a city administrator through the internal investigation that he's going through right now? Are we figuring for the 105,000 difference, or where are we going to take that from?
We'll just have to figure it out like we did this year. Any question, any other questions on the truth and taxation?
Move to close the public hearing, second.
We know we leave it open through.
Sorry to leave it open on that one.
I was just going to try to get in there, mayor and council.
Forget what I said.
Okay.
Forget what I said.
Mayor and council, we'd like to leave this open for public comment for the next two weeks. They can get ahold of anyone at city hall with their questions, and we'll answer their questions and comments and concerns when it comes to the budget. And then we will reopen or start it again on December 9th. Open it up, close it, or not open it, but keep it open and close it.
Continue.
So I think it would be appropriate to have a motion to just continue the public hearing through December 9th.
How move we continue the public hearing, second.
Okay, a motion by council member Hall to continue the public hearing through the December 9th meeting, second by council member Schultz. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, number nine, old business, 9A, second reading and adoption of cannabis registration ordinance.
Mayor and council, this is something that we went through and talked about on September 30th and the October 28th work sessions. Council gave direction to staff, and now we've applied that direction to the ordinance. The council approved the first reading of the cannabis and hemp registration ordinance on 11/12 of 2024. We're asking the council to approve the second reading and adopt the cannabis and hemp registration ordinance along with a summary publication, would that be correct?
Correct, mayor and council, so we would need two motions with this. One to approve the second reading, and then another one, separate motion to adopt the resolution approving summary publication.
Okay, questions come?
And mayor, if I may, I wanted to point out one just non-substantive tweak to the ordinance. It's in section 119.17, it's on page 99 of your packet, there was a blank there, which was referring to a section of the zoning code. So because the council has not yet, we're still going through the planning commission process for the zoning piece of this that will come to the council. So since that has not yet had final adoption, I'm going to change that reference to simply say chapter 153, which refers to the zoning chapter, or the land use chapter of the code.
I'm just, Mayor Poppy, I'm just wondering, it's kind of ironic that, was it a judge this morning? Threw out the whole licensing deal, the lottery or whatever they're...
Yeah, a judge this morning paused the lottery.
Paused the lottery.
Yeah.
So it's going to be kind of...
Yeah.
Could be, it could be a wait.
Oh, yeah.
It could be a long wait.
Litigation ensues.
So need a motion to approve the second reading, and then we need a motion to adopt the...
Summary publication.
Adopt the...
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the second reading of the cannabis registration ordinance.
Got a motion by council member Cook to adopt the second reading, is there a second?
Second.
By council member Schultz, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero, now we'll need a, another motion to adopt the ordinance and summary publication.
Resolution.
A resolution, I mean, yep.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution of summary publication of ordinance number 2024-04.
Okay, we got a motion by council member Schultz to adopt the resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Cook.
And mayor, I'd also like to have it noted on a record that there is a piece in here that's missing that will come in later.
I'd like to amend your motion with that, with noted changes for the attorney.
Oh.
On section 17.
Sorry, that was related to the first motion, and I'll just make that, I'll just, that's just a clerical change.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Never mind then.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? If not, attorney teaching, please.
Thank you, mayor, this is resolution number 67, council member Cook.
Aye.
Council member Hall.
Aye.
Council member Schultz.
Aye.
Mayor Poppy.
Aye, motion passes four to zero. All right, 10 new business, 10, approved first due agreement with Osseo Fire Department. Chief, welcome.
You don't even have to call him interim chief anymore.
I know.
No, thank you. Council, staff, it's looking for a good approval for our agreement with first due. Have any questions about it?
Tell us what it is.
Yeah, tell us what it is, so.
Blaine, Blaine's our...
Blaine's the brains. Yeah, exactly.
Well, Blaine did a lot of starting work on it.
It's all good, who cares?
Yep.
So right now, we are using multiple applications to track our calls, track our training, everything right now is kind of paper. This would put us all into one app. We can continue doing our truck checks and everything in one source instead of going out and having multiple applications that we're using. Right now, I think we're using three different ones, so being able to have one and have our firefighters do the same thing at the same time and have it on our phone ready to use is really helpful. Where we don't have any iPads or anything for it right now, so.
And, and the subscription we're using, are those, are there like monthly subscriptions for those different apps?
Yearly.
Yearly.
Yep.
And then it will be similar to this new...
Yeah.
Plus the reduction in staff time.
Yep.
Of 15 hours per, was it a month?
At least, yeah.
Yeah. That was kind of what we figured, it's probably a little bit more.
Rough guess, right, yeah.
Yep. What is the subscription price?
So there's a one-time fee just of the startup of 2,100, and then next year it would be 6,400 for the whole package. Which we have talked to Gary about, making sure we have the right budget for it.
Yep, because that is in the budget for '25. Council, any other additional questions? Now we look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the agreement for the first due platform for the Osseo Fire Department.
Okay, got a motion by council member Cook to approve the first due agreement, is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Schultz. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. 10B, approved purchase of 2025 Dodge Durango Pursuit for the police department.
You forgot B.
Sorry, oh, approved rate change for Element Technology for IT coverage, sorry.
Mayor and council, I do have Brad here for questions or... But Brad and I met recently about some rate increases with our IT group. The monthly amount would change from 28.72 per month, so 89.77 cents per workstation to 3,136.15 per month, or 98 dollars per workstation. And if you see in your packet, you can see where we've seen some increases in hours worked, just onboarding, offboarding. We've got more computers, things like that, and you can see an increase each year for IT costs in the monthly change from '21 through now '25 proposed. So if there's questions, please, I got Brad here to really answer the questions, but that's what we're proposing for 2025.
Council, questions?
That's included in the budget also, the increase?
It is, yep, oh yeah, it's already in there.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think, you know, if you, if you look at the amount that we'd be spending on annual basis, it's still significantly less than a full-time benefit eligible employee would be, which is one of the reasons that, on the risk management, which is where IT flows through, that we continue to lean towards Element and their professionalism. They've been able to be very adaptive to our needs over the last several years. Significant difference from our previous solutions, you know, and, you know, by and large, other than the inherent interpretive problems with a city staff that has very little technical knowledge and dealing with, you know, people like Brad, who's got, you know, a lot of technical knowledge. One of the things I always appreciate about Brad is he's always been very receptive, very responsive, and what most people don't know, being an elected public official always looks to make sure that he's keeping us and keeping our ideas and concepts at the forefront of negotiations within his corporation, so. I just want to say thank you to Element and make a motion to approve the rate change.
All right, got a motion by council member Schultz to approve the rate change, is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Cook, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, 10C, approved purchase of 2025 Dodge Durango Pursuit for the police department. Imagine that.
Who was driving?
A bunch of names.
There's at least one of them here.
I don't think anybody was driving.
Which, which vehicle?
Yeah, we're all alive, that's good.
That's a good thing.
Absolutely.
Thankfully, everybody's okay, so. Evening, council, mayor. In front of today is a proposal to purchase a brand-new squad car to replace one that was, uh-oh, had an accident with it, so. I looked at the state contract and looked at all the, the car vendors that make police cars, which is General Motors Dodge, which is Stellantis now, and Ford. And the cheapest one on there was the Dodge, and that's what we bought last year. And I have a spec sheet that's in the council packet, and this is exactly specked out like the one we bought last year. So if any questions, I can answer them.
Yes. Have we received all the monies from all of the insurance companies to reimburse the city for the vehicle that was totaled out? And luckily, nobody was injured, and that's a good thing. From, I think there's a couple, three insurance companies, we have the League of Minnesota Cities, we have our insurance, and then the alleged perpetrator.
Mayor, council, this is kind of convoluted to get in tuned with this, so no, we have not. The car has been looked at, but the car itself is the only thing that's been looked at. So the equipment hasn't been looked at yet.
Right.
Because it's so damaged that they can't get inside of it yet to get the equipment and to look at what we can reuse and what we cannot. Our problem is, and this is why we're coming to the council now, is that we need to make the order. It's open right now on the state bid, if we don't, then we may have to wait a whole nother year to order a car. So this is in our CIP to replace my vehicle in 2013. That, so the money is there to buy a new car in 2025. What we've proposed internally is pushing my car off and replacing this one for now, and then seeing what comes back. Because we're going to have some insurance monies coming our way, which could replace everything. We've been told it's over 35,000 to fix the car that we currently have.
Thirty-six at minimum.
Or 36, and that's a minimum. But the whole backend was smushed forward, and the actual top and doors and everything crinkled like they're supposed to, to keep everybody safe inside. But we've also got a vault that we can't get to that has a bunch of equipment in it. We know that our squad light control thing was broken with the impact. The computer was thrown, but we haven't been able to get people in it yet. But we need to make this order now, and then we'll, what our thought is, is it'll either be totaled or it won't. But we're going to buy one anyway for 2025, and now we're in that bid period where they're accepting orders, but we may not take, we're not going to take custody of it till February, March, and then by the time we build it out, we could be down a car for some time.
So the question then is, if we approve this, we're not spending any money yet.
No, no.
The money will be spent upon delivery.
Usually it's after delivery, it's like 30 days after delivery, which I think last time it was about five, six months before we actually...
And, and I know last year, when the three vehicles were ordered, and I know the price was around 92,000 apiece, but that included everything.
That, that's everything, that's striping, that's every piece of equipment in there. And right now, you know, we do have a Dodge with some other damage to the rear that we're just using for right now.
Was that another?
No, that hit the backend. The one squad car was pushed into the other one.
Okay, yeah, right, 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 yeah.
And so, and then we have one that's being built from the original purchase last year, currently in the shop getting built. There was one squad that hit a deer, and that, we're waiting on headlights for that one, and that one got replaced. That was 25,000 worth of damage, but our insurance told us to replace it. So we would like to make the order now, and we, we will either get some portion of that, but it's in the CIP. No ma, I mean, no matter what, we have the money available. We just may have to take my car, which is probably okay with me to push, I mean, it is okay, I don't, I, I can drive that till the wheels fall off, but we'll push that down the road within the CIP, which, so it shouldn't affect anything there.
And then the next question is, do we have insurance that covers loss of use? If not, we should maybe look at that since there's deer running around, and hopefully you weren't, you weren't driving and hitting a deer.
There was two deer.
So in, in the last, in the last month, we've had two squads hit a deer, and then a drunk driver.
Alleged drunk.
Well, no, it's...
They haven't been convicted, have they?
No, but...
Okay, so it's alleged.
Okay. Hit our squad cars.
Did that person have insurance?
We are working on that right now, I know the car was extensively damaged, it caught fire and burst into flames.
Right.
So if there was an insurance card in there, we lost it, and that person going to, into jail.
Yeah, yeah.
So the, the officer that wrote the accident report was from the sheriff's department.
Right.
And Brooklyn Park, another agency, is the one that did the arrest, so it's still trying to figure out who was...
And, and we had one of our officers that went above and beyond and pulled the person out of the burning car, and that should be commended for that, that officer.
That's coming.
Okay, good, good, I was going to bring that up tonight.
We're working that.
Great.
And I know our, our insurance, the league has been, I think, in contact with the owner of the other vehicle to, to get that insurance information, so they're working on it.
Okay, and I sure hope that the insurance is going to cover all the cost to...
The insurance company.
Do everything on the inside of that vehicle, because, you know, last year it was a good 40,000 if I remember correctly, to equip the car.
I know there was some, some damage to some equipment in there for sure, that we know about, that we can see.
Right.
But the extent of it, I don't know.
Right.
Yet.
And the important part is, nobody got hurt.
Or let the insurance can redo their thing, then we'll, at, at the fire department, probably have to cut the car open to get to the equipment inside there. They're excited about that, too.
Yeah, look at Blaine's face back there. Something to do?
Yep. But I, I do, I mean, this is important because it does take us, you know, four to five months to get the car, and then we got to get it out. You know, the quicker we can move to order the car, the better. And we can always cancel the order if things don't work out, too, so.
And it is in the 2025 budget.
It's in the CIP.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, anyway, to order that car, yep.
Mr. Mayor, I think if, if, if the money's there and the, the timing seems to make sense, I would like to make a motion to approve the purchase of the 2025 Dodge Durango Pursuit.
Okay, got a motion by council member Cook to approve the purchase of the 2025 Dodge Durango, is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Schultz, any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you know, one of the reasons that CIP was originally created was to help foresee situations that you can't foresee. And that was not something that was in place when you and I originally began on the council. So it's through thoughtful planning and lots of hours of... So it's through thoughtful planning and lots of hours of meetings that, you know, we will get this, it's gonna have to work through the insurance process, that can take several months, but, you know, radically insured, we've got the backup plan if it takes longer, and it's important for us to get a car back on the road as soon as possible, and yes, to that point, I'm glad that we're apparently moving ahead with this this evening.
Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, 10D, approve accounts payable. Any questions on it?
Again, I want to point out the Center Point Energy is all natural gas and all electric again, which is great.
We'll only have to hear that for a few more meetings.
Only one more meeting, you have to hear it. Unless I go up there.
I have no doubt.
Yeah, but you never know.
And with that, would you like to make a motion?
You can go for it.
No, no, I don't want to steal this.
All right, I'll make the motion.
And what is that motion?
I'm sorry?
What is your motion? Said he'd like to make a motion.
Not a motion.
I don't know what motion you're gonna make. All right, got a motion by council member Hall to approve tonight's council payables. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Cook. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, number 11, administrator report.
Give me one second here, I apologize. Okay, so one of the things I'd just like to announce, we got some more information as far as our winter coat drive. I know we have some announcements for the mayor on that, but I would just wanted to update what's going on with the winter coat drive at the police department. We had asked, or had said that we'd be done on the 30th, we just got information today that we can go until mid to late December, so we're, I'd cut it off on, say, the 15th of December, just from the email that we got from the coat drive, so I wanted to say that. Also, we are doing very well with the coat drive, it looks like we're gonna be over our record, our record is 71, we've got boxes and bins of those coats sitting in our garage. I just saw the huge piles of them from people, so that's awesome, what the citizens have been able to do. Looks like myself and Officer Zitzsperger will be attending the 29th Annual Toys for Tots in Golden Valley, so we will be bringing all our toys down there on December 13th, so we'll be on the news, and, and we've got, the Toys for Tots will be from, do you know? When's Toys for Tots start?
It's now through the 14th.
So now through the 14th of December for Toys for Tots. So if anybody sees that out there, just please donate your toys.
And then we'll also be collecting at the Mini Dazzle.
Yep.
Yep.
We'll be collecting at the Mini Dazzle, also, I think we have them throughout the city, they're on our website as far as where the locations are, where you can drop them off, it's really neat, a neat program that we do. One other thing I wanted to throw out there, too, is the police department will be participating in combination with the Champlin Police Department in the shop with a cop, so we actually have some children that we're gonna be taking shopping and we have some donations to take care of that, so we'll be joining Champlin Police Department and doing that, so that's something new this year. And that's my report.
All right. Assistant City Administrator, Vicar Man.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Just a couple of things, I just wanted to say thank you to Administrator Michelson and just the rest of the staff, they've really welcomed me and we've been starting the training and onboarding process. I would note that it is a, a new team, although there are some existing people and some newer people, but we really do have a strong staff getting started up there, so I'm just very excited for the future and thanks for having me. And happy Thanksgiving.
Counsel and attorneys, report, attorney teaching.
Um, no, no report really, just, we already chatted earlier about the Office of Cannabis Management will be on pause for the foreseeable future with the temporary restraining order issued on the lottery, so that will be interesting to watch and see how that all plays out, but it sounds like there will be some delays.
Counsel member Hall.
December 2nd, if I remember correctly, there's a park and rec committee, I'm not sure what time, was it 6:00 PM? 6:00 PM here?
6:00 PM here.
Here.
Yep.
And one thing I'm gonna bring up for future for the parks and rec, and I'll bring, I'll let everybody know is, years ago, we talked about putting bituminous down on the hockey rink at the elementary, the old elementary school, talking with one of the public works people, it takes them a long time now to freeze the ground with the water, it just keeps soaking in, soaking in, and with bituminous, it would pretty much freeze it right away and they could paint it white and put some lines on it and make it like a real hockey rink, so I'll be bringing that up, and I know it's gonna cost money, so we're gonna have to look maybe at some youth organization or the state or somebody, because it's not gonna be cheap. And wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Be prepared for the cold, and again, like I said before, if you have elderly neighbors, please take a look at them, watch them right now because it's starting to get colder out, you know, check on them to make sure they have heat in their house, because that's happening in the cold, just like it's heat or in the heat in the summer that they have air conditioning or fan blowing on them. You know, we have a lot of elderly people in this, in this community, so check on them, make sure they're okay, and check on your neighbors in general. And again, suicide prevention, we're losing too many veterans, way too many, so if you know veterans, check up on them, make sure that they're doing okay also, especially this time of year. You know, there should not be a veteran that's homeless or without a meal, so if you know of a, a vet that doesn't have a meal, reach out. You know, they're, they serve this country and I, I can't emphasize enough that they did us a great service. I think that's all I have.
Counsel member Cook.
Just a couple of things. First, I wanna just wish council member Hallstrom a quick and speedy recovery and we look forward to having her back soon. I want to thank Ty Domben for his time with the Oseo Fire Department. We do have, despite of the, the recent news about the Office of Cannabis, we do have a cannabis meeting tomorrow with our Red Pine Group to continue kind of looking down that road and what that's gonna look like. Small Business Saturday is this Saturday here in Oseo, so get out and, and support the local businesses, which they actually do one of those bingo cards that they, they go around to the different businesses and stamp and, and so, and get, do drawings and giveaways based on that, which is cool. And then lastly, I, oh, I did want to mention, if you guys need a, a place to put a Toys for Tots Dropbox, I happen to know the owner of a coffee shop that would happily put a Dropbox in that shop, so please just talk to me about that. But I also want to thank, thank, special thank you to all of our police officers for their hard work. It's been a rough month and a half for you guys, for a lot of different reasons, and so we just want you to know that as a community, we're so grateful to have you and we're so thankful for you, and that, you know, as a, as the son of a former police officer, you know, it's, it's one of those things that you know when, when you guys go out and you leave the door every day, that you literally do put your lives on the line on, on the regular, and, and that got a little too close for comfort the other night, and so we're just really, really glad you guys are all okay. Cars can be replaced, people can't, so we're glad you're okay and we appreciate you and so thank you. And with that, I yield my time.
Counsel member Schultz.
I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving here coming up. Also, I'm sure you're covered this, too, but Mini Dazzle will be coming, come and gone before we meet again. So going out there, I think a notable change for people to be aware of, and I don't know whether you're covered that or not, but the hot dogs and their stuff will be served outside this year, not inside the community center. That was the plan that was presented to us, so I look forward to seeing that there. I also want to echo council member Cook's comments, you know, cars can be replaced, people can't, and I'm very thankful that on that particular day, everybody got to go home, because that's, that's a real thing that we don't talk about enough. And again, thank the police officers for everything they do for us. You know, we, we've had some tough times over these last couple of years when it comes to public safety, and in talking to the police officers that I've spoken with over the last several months, they are appreciative of our support of them and our ongoing support of them, and I, in, in seeing what's coming for 2025, I know the new council members seem to share the same affinity for the public safety of our residents here, and that's really provided through our police and our fire department. You know, there's just, there's really honestly no other communities even remotely close to us with the response times that we have to medical emergencies, so, I mean, if you want to die in Oseo, it's really hard, so, you know, it's a, I'm grateful for the fact we're gonna have to face that. So outside of that, you know, I'll, I'll yield to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, yeah, just some general announcements, city offices will be closed November 28th and 29th for Thanksgiving. As mentioned, small business is this Saturday, the 30th, up and down Central Alamo, just a great day, so come up and support the businesses, and then as we mentioned, police department is hosting at the Coat Drive is, and that'll go through mid-December, and then the Mini Dazzle is on Friday, December 6th from 6:00 to 8:00. Santa will be escorted to town on a fire truck and through the parade and then available visit with children in Bor Boom Park, and then we'll have the create-by-me photography, we'll take photos and be available for all families at that event as well, and obviously the Coat Drive and the Toys for Tots donations will be also, be able to be donated that evening, and then Saturday, December 7th, the Oseo Lions Club will be sponsoring the lunch with Santa in the community center, another great event from 11 till 1:00 PM, so bring the family in, there's usually photo ops at that as well. And then just a couple of announcements for committees going into next year, two resident appointments for Park and Rec, please send your letters of interest to the city clerk before the end of December for commission openings. And with that, we move for number 14 adjournment. Got a motion by council member Schultz, is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Cook, non-debatable, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We're adjourned at 9:02, thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, yeah.